Welcome to the Uwena School Board Business Meeting. Today is Wednesday, July 10th, 2024. The meeting is being held at the Uwena School District Board Room at 826 South 1500 East in Naples, Utah. Present at this meeting is President Dave Shivers, Vice President Tanya McKee, Robin McClellan, Todd Massey, Denise Maynard, Superintendent Dr. Rick Woodford, and myself, Grant Stoddard, the Business Administrator. The time is four o'clock PM.
Thank you. Welcome, everybody. Appreciate everybody taking time out of their busy schedule for a meeting we didn't intend on having a few months ago, but we appreciate everyone. Our reverence will be offered by Todd Massey and then a pledge of allegiance by Shawna Moon.
Our Father in Heaven, we're thankful for the opportunity which we have to be here this evening. We're grateful for the summer and the opportunity it gives us to rethink our operations and processes, and we pray that that would bless us as we do so, as we work on the different things. This evening, we pray that that would guide us, that we may always go in the direction of what's best for our students and the kids. We were grateful for the opportunity again we have to serve and pray that that would bless us in doing so. Bless our families while we're away. Bless those that work for the school district in any way. May they continue to be engaged in good and may they continue to prosper, we pray, in the name of Jesus Christ.
Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Shawna, patron input. While Shawna's checking on patron input, the superintendent will check online and see if we have anything there. No one has signed up for public input. Okay. Thank you, Superintendent. Policies for approval on second reading, 001.0300, Impact Aid Policy, and Grant, we'll turn that over to you, I guess? This is backwards for me, so should we, do we just need a motion? Board members, does somebody want a motion? If we have a motion and a second, then we can discuss it. This policy was formerly called Policies and Procedures for Indian Education pertaining to Section 7003 and 7004, Impact Aid Program.
I move to approve the revised version of Policy 001.300, Policies and Procedures for Indian Education pertaining to Section 7003 and 7004 of the Impact Aid Program as drafted, which changes the title of each policy to Impact Aid Policy and brings it into compliance with federal regulations on second reading.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Denise, second. Any further discussions or questions, board members? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Purchases requiring board approval. Grant, I've got to turn it over to you now. That's all they wrote on the paper. Do we have purchases that need board approval?
Yes, and so there is a memorandum in the, on board docs about the, we issued an invitation for bid on the previously approved USD asphalt project that's repaving throughout the district at various locations, and we received, where this is an invitation for bid, it's simply a, if they've met the specifications, we take the lowest price. The entity that had the lowest bid of $131,191 was Advanced Paving and Construction LLC, and I'm happy to report that that is significantly lower than what we, what the board approved for the asphalt paving in the capital outlay budget, so it's a really exciting thing that we're seeing prices lower than we expected them to be.
So Grant, is Advanced Paving, are they a local company then?
I don't believe so, but that's also not something under the procurement code we're allowed to consider in this matter, so.
Yeah, I was just curious if they are. I don't, I'm not familiar with that company.
Have we worked with them before?
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say. Have we done, they've done work for us?
Yes, and that was where, you know, meeting specifications, and I mean, the specifications don't say that we've worked with them before in the past, but I believe we've had interactions with them and they've been positive, so.
Looks like they're out of Ogden, if this is the company. Does asphalt have to go in, like I know for cement, it has to be a certain temperature to cure the best? Is asphalt the same, or is it?
It has to be over fifty some degrees, I believe, if I remember right.
Under, under a certain thing too? So they'll, what are they gonna just do if we approve?
So the idea is to start right away, this is, this is one. It was, would have been nicer to actually been able to get this approved in the June meeting. We just didn't have enough time to get that bid finalized and everything before that. Hence, we're doing this meeting so that we can be ready before registration and all of that, so.
So it looks like it's mainly, if I recall, strictly for repair and then just seal coating, correct? It's not any major asphalt?
No, so there will be asphalt at, like Ashley Elementary redoing the parking lots there, and then seal coating, and then there will be some touch-up jobs, like in La Pointe, there are some holes that need to be taken care of. And, oh, I'm sorry, no, it does talk about the repair aspect, repairing issues that are there, and then sealing and building in the cracks and that, so I'm sorry, I misspoke.
This is probably total off, that we had some stuff that needed done at the high school. Has that already been done, or does this include the high school?
No, that was, that was previously done with the completion of the new ag building there.
Board members, any other questions? We need a motion, correct, to approve? Would somebody like, I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve awarding the FIB for the USD asphalt project to Advanced Paving and Construction LLC.
And that's IFB, not FIB.
Oh, IFB.
She didn't say the I.
Kinda like FIB, though.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Robin McClellan, seconds? Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Calendering items, Superintendent, will you take that one for us?
Yes, President. Only one item, and that's a second unanticipated board meeting in July, which would be July 17th at four o'clock PM. We will not have a work session that evening, so that meeting will be very brief, about like this one we just did and are about to adjourn, so. Yeah, and I, you know, again, board members, I, you know, our intention was, I feel bad, this is the one month you're supposed to have a break from these meetings, and we end up with two, but it's just, it's just how the bidding process kind of came together for us this summer. And this particular meeting, we believe it's gonna save us some significant money by bumping that a week and giving those contractors, you know, the, an opportunity to get bids from their subs. The Fourth of July weekend really threw a wrench in the plans there, so. Anyway, that's, that's all I have as far as calendar items. Grant, do you have anything else? That's it, President?
Board members, I don't know, I don't remember what gets said in what meeting, so at the first of the month, what happened is, is that we had two main contractors that was interested in this bid, and they couldn't get their subs to return their bids because of the Fourth of July weekend. So they said, if you want it for the 10th, this board meeting, we've got a guest, so we're gonna have to add some substantial money to it so that we can come out in the end. If you want to wait, give us another week so that we can get them in, then our bids will be way closer to actual. Did I do a fair job with that?
Yes.
If you already knew that, I apologize. Is there anything else? Board members, anything else that, that's the end of the agenda for this meeting? Todd, do you have anything else for this meeting?
Nothing, no, thank you.
Denise? Robin?
Nah.
Tanya? Grant?
Nope.
Superintendent?
Nope.
I'd entertain a motion to close the business meeting.
I'll make a motion to close the business meeting.
Todd Massey, second?
Sorry, I'll second that. Sorry, President, I gotta interview you.
No, that's just fine. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously.
Twelve minutes and thirty seconds. That might be a record. I don't know.
The time is 4:12.
That's gotta be our fastest one by far. Maybe of all time.
That's maybe more support for drone show versus, anyway, it was really cool.
Welcome to the UNA School Board Work Session. Today is Wednesday, July 10th, 2024. The meeting is being held at UNA School District Boardroom at 826 South 1500 East in Naples, Utah. Present at this meeting is President Dave Shivers, Vice President Tanya McKee, Robin McClellan, Todd Massey, Denise Maynard, Superintendent Dr. Rick Woodford, and myself, Grant Stoddard, the Business Administrator. The time is 4:30 PM.
Welcome, everybody. We're ready to start our work session portion of the meeting. First of all, we're going to have our reverence by Vice President Tanya McKee.
Our dear Father in Heaven, we're so grateful for the opportunity to meet together, grateful for the people that we have the opportunity to serve with. We ask you to bless that we can be guided and directed, that we will be aware of the needs of the students and the staff and the community, that we will make good and wise decisions that will affect all of those around us. And we say these things in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Informational and discussion items, strategic planning, and our superintendent is going to take that for us.
Okay, thank you, President. Yeah, the main purpose of this work session, we have two items on the agenda. First, we want to follow up with the retreat we actually had last fall and discuss the concept, the idea of putting service into our strategic plan. The second thing we'll do is we'll talk about the Utah Fits All Scholarship. I sent you some information via email a week ago, so hopefully you've had a chance to look at the information. What I want to do to start, though, if you look on Board Docs, there's a couple of documents there. The first one is the District Director Visits to Schools. And the reason why I want to share this with you, you know, you saw the student achievement results last month, right? We were able to share that information with you. This is kind of another piece when we're looking at how we're doing. One very important thing with leadership is its accountability, right? It's inspecting or checking to see if the things that we're expecting to have happen are happening in our schools. And what that does is that that builds continuity, it builds common vocabulary as we're out in the schools. And so if you look at that first document, which is titled "Visits," if you'll open that up, you can see how many visits that our directors made in the various schools, okay? So if you look at this chart, for instance, Ashley Elementary, we had directors visiting that school 103 times over the course of the school year. If you look over at La Pointe, right? La Pointe's our smallest school, but we still had 63 visits, okay? And if you look over to the right of that table, well, you can see the high school, we had 227 visits. That's simply because that's our largest school, there's a lot going on there. So there would be more visits at our high school than our middle schools. Ashley, probably one of the reasons why we had more visits than our other elementary schools was that we had a new principal over there that just, you know, needed a little more support and so there was more visits at Ashley. Over to the right, the other table is "Visits by Purpose." So the purposes we track are service, partnership meetings, expertise, meaning specific to the director's role, and then "Other" would be general supervision. So it's just taking time to pop in and see how things are going. And so that shows that distribution. Any questions about this, about this, these tables and what they mean?
These are director visits, right?
Yeah, so if you go to the next one, which is "Purpose," titled "Purpose," then you can see how many visits each director individually had and collectively as a group. So if you'll open that one, on the top left-hand side, you can see that as a group, we ended up having 1,116 total visits, which is, it's really good. We shared this information at a training that we went to, actually, it was back in, was it April? And, you know, the people that were there, they were blown away with how much our directors are out in schools. But you can see, you know, Ms. Delin, she won the race with 234 visits. And you can see where Jaime and Mindy both had over 200 visits. I came in at 155. So there you go, right? That was the challenge, to get to 150. And Jeff was 126. We even encourage, Shauna's part of our team, right? She's in our director meetings. Shauna gets out and supports the secretaries. So anyway, you can see both by director and then also visit type. Again, you know, partnerships, the green would be service, expertise, and then general supervision or other. So I share this with you, Board Members. I know you don't have the context to compare, like, well, what other districts do, but I'd encourage you to find any district in the state, per capita, per director, per, that has this kind of data even, right, that tracks it. So we feel really good about where we're at. I've been tracking, well, we've been tracking our visits since I've been here, and we've never had numbers like this. So then the other piece of data that I think is really important, it's back in the administrative content. And I asked Jaime, I said, "Jaime, I think the board would like to know, of those visits, how many times, how many classroom observations did we do as a group?" So we have a team that consists of the directors, not always all the directors, right? The directors that are available can go, usually it's Ms. Delin, Jaime, it's me when I can be there. It's Amanda, one of our instructional coaches, that kind of runs, heads up the instructional walkthroughs, the building principal of the school we're going into, and typically another coach. So it's usually a team of about six or seven people. So that team made it into 284 classrooms for observations. Those observations are at least 10 minutes, usually 12-minute drop-in. Sometimes the teachers know we're coming, sometimes they don't. And we go in and we look at very specific indicators of performance. And then after each of those, we usually do six at a time, sometimes a few more, sometimes one or two less. But the typical number is six observations at a time. And then after those six observations, we go back into a, around a conference room, and Amanda Remington then would run us through a very detailed and specific protocol, where we take our data and we aggregate it, so that, you know, there's some continuity and consistency in what we're looking for and what we see. We have conversations about it. We share recommendations with the building principal and the coach in the building. So these are very specific things related to our instructional framework and the research-based practices that we're looking for in the classrooms. So again, 284. The practice of what we're doing is rare. You won't find it in many school districts. But then to have that kind of feedback going to principals, and what that does is it equips the principals and the coaches to really be consistent and specific with the feedback that they're able to give teachers when they go in and do all the classroom observations that they do, right? Which is, again, a whole lot. So what happens through this process is the vocabulary that we use, the indicators that we're looking for, it creates some continuity throughout our district, K-12. So you can go into, you know, you went to high school and you can go into a science classroom and watch the instruction, and some of the same indicators we're looking for there would also apply in first grade or second grade. And as teachers get together and they have PLC meetings, it's created a common language in our district and common expectations. So is this one reason why we're seeing results? Yeah, it's one reason. There's other reasons, but this is one reason, is that we now have common vocabulary, very clear expectations of what we expect to see in classrooms. And when you couple that with the curriculum that we're using and the fact that our kids are reading better than ever before, you know, all of those things contribute to the success that we're experiencing right now in UNA School District. So I wanted to share that with you. This all starts with our strategic plan, right? And it kind of flows from there into our district improvement plan and then into the execution of that plan, which is what we're talking about here. And I think that's a good segue into now looking at amending our plan. So back in November last year, we had a retreat up at Flamingorge Lodge. And we had great conversations about the strategic plan as we looked at the various components. And really, the one theme that came out of that was this idea that, you know, there's a need that's not being met oftentimes with students in our community. Probably not being met always in school, or oftentimes nowadays, maybe with family arrangements, there's some needs that maybe aren't being met. And as we talked about that, the theme that came out is that we probably need to really look at service, like service learning and giving kids opportunities for authentic service work, where they can really learn some of the values that we have as a board, right? You guys, in the strategic plan, there's some clear values there. And so as I have pondered getting, preparing for this meeting, I thought, you know, I'm just going to take a stab at this. And I don't know if I landed it in the right place or not, but the document that I sent you, if you'll go ahead and open that now, it says it's the draft strategic plan. And I didn't change anything. I didn't really even spend time on anything except that service piece. So when you look at the core values, we already had work ethic, responsibility and accountability, grit, integrity, kindness, respect, empathy, intolerance, we grouped together, unity, optimism, and then the eighth one that I'm proposing and that you proposed as a board is that we add service, okay? So what does that mean? If you'll scroll down now, down to page, page five.
Board Members, did you all get it open? So you're okay.
So on page five, you'll see that chunk in red, right, under "Service." And this was, again, it's just taking my notes and the conversations we had, trying to articulate that into some kind of a system that we could implement, right? And execute at the school level. This is what I came up with. President, if it's okay, I'd like to just read through it. And then once we get all the way through it, let's go back up to the top and then we can kind of break it down, and if there's questions the board has. I want to tell you this right now, that I, I'll take no offense, like, I'm not married to this language, okay? If there's anything in here you guys want to change, you want to see different, please feel safe and welcome to, you know, to provide input and questions. We're not going to finalize this tonight. We're not going to vote on it. So any notes that you might have that you can send me later would be appropriate as well. If you don't want to talk about it here, that would be fine. So is that okay, President, if we just keep this a little bit informal, but I'll read through it? Okay, so item eight is "Service." 8.1, each, I wonder if we should, do you want to, let's put this up here. He'll work on getting that up to where everyone can see it. 8.1, "Each school shall develop and implement a grade-level-appropriate, school-based service-learning plan." Okay? "The plan shall include the following components," so this is 8.1.1. "The first required component would be a description of how principals, values, and dispositions relating to service will be integrated into the curriculum for all students. This will include explicitly teaching the district's values of empathy, tolerance, responsibility, kindness, respect, and unity in the context of service. Students will learn the relationships between serving others and the benefits that service has for the community and for their own personal development, happiness, and future success in life." Okay? And we'll jump to 8.1.2, so this is the next requirement. "A timeline and description of service-learning opportunities for all students." Okay? And the subcomponents to that would be, "All students shall have regular opportunities to engage in service learning that benefits their family members, peers, school staff, and/or others in the community." And the next one, "Activities may be, school-wide, grade-level-based, or classroom-based. Some activities may be required and occur during the regular school day, whereas others may be optional and offered outside the regular school day." Okay, then if we go to 8.1.3, "A description of how students and staff will be systematically encouraged and appropriately recognized for engaging in service. This may be included as a component of an existing PBIS plan." So all of our schools already have PBIS plans, and many of those plans will already have a component that takes care of that. Okay, 8.1.4, "An outline of the resources and funds that will be allocated for the service-learning opportunities that will be provided for students." And then 8.2, line 8.2, "The superintendent shall approve each school's service plan, service-learning plan annually and ensure..." and ensure that each school implements their plan as intended. And then, the final eight point three, each school principal will report their school's performance related to their service learning plan as a component of their annual board meeting report. So, when they come and report each annually to you, board members, we'd ask them to hit on their service learning activities and what they're doing in their school. So, so that, that's it, essentially. What this does is it requires each school to develop a plan. So, we're not really telling them exactly what that plan should be or look like, but we're, we've got certain commonalities or components that we would want to see common throughout the district. So, board members, I, I guess, I guess we can just, President, if you want to go around the table and have them give input, you certainly can also give input through Google Docs. So, you can comment, if you'd rather do that, you can add a comment. Do you guys know how to do that?
I think I do.
Yeah, if you just look at the, like, if you look at the right of your screen, there's a little box with a plus. So, you can highlight something and then you can go over and add a comment, if you'd like to do that.
You can also just change the text, like, say you didn't want that word there, you can just make a change because it's in suggesting mode, so if you want to WordSmith anything.
Yep, you can just do it directly.
This little box here is what he's talking about, this one superintendent.
Yeah, yeah, that's to add a comment. Or like, as Grant said, you can, you can highlight something, you can change it. It won't, it won't really delete it on the master, but it'll, it'll suggest a change, okay?
When he done it, you just, we could see what you was doing.
Uh-huh, yep.
Did you catch that, board members, draw the line through it? Okay. Question superintendent, I'm sure that some of our schools, because I've heard a little bit about what they're doing about service, I was gonna say, well, we're already doing part of this, we're not asking them to stop that.
No, we're not.
We're just asking it to fix it so that if they are doing it, we're aware of what they're doing and what the kids is learning.
Yes, that's correct. Yep, so they're, they're being transparent with sharing their plan, and it gives the board an opportunity to, to know what they're doing.
Okay.
But if they're not doing service, they're gonna have to start, right?
Yes, yes. Thoughts or comments? Let's not go into any order, why don't we just be pretty informal? If you're having a thought or a comment, speak up. Like, dislike, what's going on in that head of yours, problem? Lots. There's a party in there.
I've got, so we had talked about earlier about maybe finding out what people are already doing, and this kind of will let us know what they're doing, but did we ever find any research about what already happening in the school?
No, and, and really, you know, as, as we ask the schools to, to provide more detailed information, and, you know, on the, the calendar invites section that you guys have seen, a lot of those kinds of things that they're doing came up. If you, if you remember going back, there were, there were certain activities they did that might have involved service where you guys were invited. But outside of that, there's, there's, there's not a ton, you know, systematically. So, this, this would help us, we'll learn that real fast because they'll put it in their plan.
Just a piggyback question real quick. So, what about principals, have they been, have you talked about it in your principal leadership meetings?
No, we, we, we have not, yeah.
I wondered what their input could be.
No, on the execution side, they'll have, they'll have input. But on, on the, kind of, this is more of a policy, even though it's not really a policy, it's more on the, on the policy side. But on the execution, as they develop their plans, there'll be, there'll be some input for them.
I think, board members, when we discussed it in our retreat, we said that we'd like service to be part of, what's the list?
Strategic plan.
Strategic plan. And so, this probably doesn't sound very good, but we're, I think, board members, if and when you approve something, you're giving them a directive that you want service to be part of your strategic plan. And so, then the process will start that he'll go through with the principals now, is that correct?
Yeah.
So, you know, are you, are, are we going to give a directive that we want service to be part of our, part of this? And then, if we, and we kind of, unless we've had a change of heart, we kind of felt like that's what we wanted to do at our board retreat. So, then, is the wording doing what we had intended?
President, also, might I, you know, this, this is a starting point, right? What, what I've given you is, it's, it's a starting point. What I would suggest, because we have time on our side, right? We don't, we don't, we're not gonna approve this today, and, and we may not approve it until August or September. But the idea is, is I could take this to our principals after, after the board feels good about a draft, I could take it to them and get some feedback, which would be the way to go, right? I mean, we need to have something to get feedback on.
What I really love is that, for some reason, I thought we were gonna come and have to think through all the details of how this is implemented, and I love that it's actually those that are doing it, the principals and the staff are going to figure out what's best for their school, and I like that a lot. I like that they get to have their input as to how they want that to happen, what actually works, and anyway, I, I like that.
So, so one of my, plus and a negative. The negative being, and I don't take this wrong, is I, I just don't want to add one more thing. And so, that, that always concerns me, but I do like the, the wording that you've used. Because you, you read our mission statement, and it's pretty simple. We provide a positive and engaging learning environment where all students develop essential skills for productive citizens and lifelong learning. So, is that one of those essential skills? I think it fits into that category. But you named this in your first sentence, I believe it was, service learning plan. And so, if there's a process that it is an actual learning plan, it's not just another thing, but it's an actual, it has to do with, with learning. I feel a little better about that process, and, and maybe, as Tanya said, maybe when the, the principals get together and, and they talk a little bit about this, you know, that, it's, I, I just don't want them, there are a lot of things going on, that the kids are already doing service, these clubs are doing service, there's a ton of things out there. We don't need another thing for them to do. You know, I, I have granddaughters that are engaged in drill, which is eleven months a year, right?
Ten and a half.
Ten and a half months a year, and, and they, they have a lot of things that they're, they're already doing, you know, that pulls them away from any type of family activity. It's, it's a challenge to ever set a time where we can go somewhere as a family based on that. So, I just don't want it to, to impede more into the, to the family, I guess, or into the summer months and, and to some of those things. But yet, if we develop the, the learning side of it, I, I love that, that it's a service learning plan, I think is, is the key to me. And if, if we develop somewhere in there that that's what it actually is, is, is an opportunity to learn. What are they learning? I guess we described that in here, it looks like we cover it, you've covered it pretty good.
Yeah, I think we've tied it into the values that are already part of our, already part of our plan.
So, I, I kind of like that theory of it, but I, I just really want to know if the, if the principals come back and say, what do you want us to do, another, you know, it's like, we're, we're exceeding and excelling in places where we haven't before. Maybe this will help us and maybe it won't, but if it's, it's based on learning and fits into the learning, and then I think, I don't want them to just do it for just one more thing that they have to put on their checklist.
Yeah, Todd, and I'm, I'm glad you brought this up, because this is always our big concern, right? You only can put so much on the plate, and then it starts to spill over. We've really narrowed our focus this past year specifically. Like, we, we even, at one point during the year, we made a deliberate decision, even though it's in our district improvement plan, to really focus on, on culture, right? We, we stopped the culture walkthroughs and we stopped taking a lot of time in our DLMs to, to address culture specifically, because we felt like we needed to really focus on the instructional framework. And we feel like that paid dividends for us, like, because the, the focus was so intense on, on just a few things, and we wanted to do them well, and we did, and we, we're moving in a great direction now. So, I, I, I appreciate that, and in the execution...
I don't want to lose focus on, on what's working.
That's right.
I guess that's...
Yeah, in, in the execution of this, one thing I would say is that, that we would want, we would encourage principals to keep this simple, right? Keep it simple, they don't, they don't, notice we didn't give an ex, like, we didn't say how many service, you know, opportunities or... I, I, I think I want principals to work with their leadership teams and, and ask that questions. What, what's feasible, what can we do, what's reasonable, so that we can give our kids a really good, you know, opportunity with service? But, but not so much that it's gonna detract us from all the other things that we already are doing. And I, that, schools are gonna need to have, they're, they're gonna have to have skin in the game, right? They're gonna have to make those decisions about. And then, I think we just look at data and we, we, it's just like everything else we do, right? When, when we get a plan, we, we try it, we make adjustments along the way, and we give feedback and we see what the data shows and what's, what seems to be working. Principals will learn from one another. So, it's, it's definitely, you know, it's not gonna be perfect the first year that we do it. But if this is who we are and what's important, I think, give us a few years and we'll get this figured out where it, it, it kind of flows into what we do and who we are as a school district.
I, I just really love this, I feel really passionately about it, but I guess that's why it was, I brought the idea. But I don't, I'm, I'm like you, I don't like to put more on everybody else's plates. I don't like just coming up with things for people to do. But I feel like this impacts everything. And, and really, where the idea came from was, I was thinking about some behavioral issues that we had been discussing, whether it was on teams or different things that were going on. And I thought, you know, you can go and try to clean up a mess and try to discipline and do all kinds of things when you have behavioral issues, or you can teach, teach things that prevent that from ever happening. And I feel like service is that thing. Service is a way to, that humbles people, it helps us get back and think about somebody other than ourselves. It improves behavior, and it, it'll improve the culture of our teams and of our schools. And I just feel like, instead of disciplining after the fact and trying to figure out what's appropriate, do we suspend them, do we, all of these things, we're gonna prevent some things by, from happening in the first place by helping our kids get beyond themselves and think of something outside of just trying to be important by being the star of something. And not that that's not important to achieve, but if they get beyond themselves, they're gonna learn lessons that are going to affect their performance and their, and the culture of everything that we do.
So, some of those optional components, right? Well, at the high school, you got the National Honor Society, and those kids engage in a lot of service, but that's optional. They don't have to sign up for National Honor Society, but that could be a, a key component to their plan on the optional side. We also want kids that are not on the, in the National Honor Society to have opportunities to engage in service if, if they so choose, right? There's gonna be some optional components. I, I think I might have shared this with you, but I, I inherited a, a, you know, when you, when you take a job as a high school principal, there's already many good things happening in the school. And one of the good things that the previous principal had put in place, every Thanksgiving, they essentially took a full day and they went out and, and they had organized and coordinated service projects throughout the community. Each teacher, you know, signed up and, and would take a team of kids and did all kinds of amazing service in Star Valley, and it, it was, it was awesome. It, I, I love that, I, I felt like it really did contribute to a positive school culture. And I couldn't believe it, it was optional, but we had about seventy percent of our kids that, that came that day and participated, about seventy percent, and they didn't have to, they could just take the day off, seventy percent. So, I'm not saying that's what we should do, or that's what you in a high school should do, but I think by virtue of putting this out there, we're gonna see things like that emerge that are, that are productive and positive, that teach our kids something that it's hard to teach without rolling up your sleeves and doing something for somebody else.
I think, I think you make a good point, that's, that's the reality, is what I'm getting at, is, is it's not just a service project. It's a, it's a purpose, there's gotta be a purpose behind it, or it, it's, it's just another project. If there isn't purpose, it doesn't matter if it's a distracted team, I mean, you look at most all professional teams, college teams, they all have, you know, even the Jazz, you know, they, they have a common service project for each of their staff members as well as players, you know? They, they have to provide community service, so many hours. Those are, those are processes that are, the individual's hopefully gaining something, but not just to do it. I guess that's what I'm getting at. So, I agree, Tanya, if it has purpose, I think it has great value. But it, for, and hopefully, we can somehow write that into this plan, what our vision of that is, not just a service project.
Yeah. I'm looking at the, the sports, because that's what my kids did. And, and, you know, they have a limited time a day or a week that they can spend with those kids. I know FFA doesn't have this, and FFA's bylaws have a service project already in there. They have to have that, which is great. But when you're limited to what that coach can spend with those kids, and what Todd said, drill and cheers, two, ten and a half months, that's a long time to be part of something. So, I, I, I'm really interested to see what the, the leaders and the coaches and the advisors and the principals think what their buy-in is, you know? Because I, you definitely don't want to give up valuable time for one more thing. But I do, I love service, that's why I do the stuff I do, and, you know? It, it brings so much back, and our community here is so good about it. So, I think we need to, you know, continue that, but I do worry that it's gonna add one more thing to these programs that already have so much on their plate. But I, yeah, so. But yeah, that was just where I'm thinking, I'm just trying to think through each step.
Some of the logistics. And what you're talking about is, when you say limited time, Utah High School Activities Association has parameters for how many hours they can spend per week with their stu-, with their athletes. I, I have some of the same concerns, but also, I, I love this idea. What about, I'm just gonna throw this out there, what about the word volunteerism, service and volunteerism? That's one thought, and then the other thought is, I mean, Utah's known as, we're a service state, that's part of our culture here. I would love to see building of community, the purpose, like, to benefit, like, I mean, I don't know, but I'm just saying, if it could benefit the schools themselves, or kids in, a population in the school, I would love to see it not just be, we gotta do, you know, check the box type of thing. It's something that actually would benefit and unify, do those things. I, I mean, that would not be, you know, I'm, I'm sure the people at, at the school level will be able to do that. But I think it's really important that we build community and, and circle back to unity, which you've already said. But I really do want to get principals' input. I mean, I mean, you're asked, as, as extracurricular teachers, you're asked to do a lot of stuff that's not on their contract time. So, I mean, it'd have to be, I, I guess that's my, kind of my concern, I mean, they already feel like they give service and volunteer. I'm just saying, so we just, I'm sure they just need to make it, I don't know, I'm just, I'm just saying it, it's a fine line, I guess, with, again, asking...
I just thought about fundraising, how much time they put in to do fundraising and...
Lot of it's, yeah, a ton of time, and I, and, and, you know, maybe, they're already doing, I mean, I know, you're, they're probably doing a lot of it, so maybe it's just codifying and system, I don't know, anyway.
Yeah, what a, what a great thought, though, you know, you do, you, these, these athletes, they ask for a lot of money in our community.
Giving back, I, I think I love that idea.
The idea of giving back is huge.
Seeing a business that owner that had a fire or needs a cleanup or some, I mean, I don't know, I'm just saying, that really, I love that idea of our community coming together, building our community, not, you know, looking for things outside of it.
Yeah, you know, we have this new Snap Raise thing, right? And, and I know there's a lot of controversy, is this a good thing? Is it where, where, you know, you, each athlete puts their email address... Is it, um, where where, you know, you each athlete puts their email address, uh, gets email addresses of people that they know and they throw them out there? And and then those go out and it's, you know, it's a marketing kind of thing so that I, you know, again, there's mixed, there's mixed feelings. Some people really like it. I know the business department likes it from a fiscal standpoint, from a an accounting standpoint. It's really slick, right? Because there's no cash exchange. However, uh, I think there are families that feel like, man, I get bombarded. I get and then they feel bad and there's, you know, they leverage social pressure to try to get fundraising and and, uh, so, you know, this this idea for our kids that, you know, if you're going to ask, you need to be willing also to serve in the community.
A more personal level.
And I I think it would soften, um, the harshness of it for many in our community if they knew that our student athletes were out there providing service for the community. I think it would be a very positive. I I know it would be. I've I've been around this and I've experienced it. And when you take a group of football players and you and you go out and 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 you do something very kind and productive for a community member, that means a lot. It's, I mean, and it teaches those kids a lot, right? So it's a, I I I personally like the idea of of, you know, if if I was a high school principal, I would ask my coaches to have one meaningful service project perceived, you know, preseason, postseason, whenever, just during the year. I think that would be productive. And if anything, it helps sharpen the saw with those players. It gets them, uh, out there off social media, uh, working together in a productive way, building meaningful relationships as they're engaged and work together. That's sharpening your saw. That's making you better.
We should maybe put in it, no cell phones allowed at these projects. They'll be locked up, but yeah.
Well, maybe our coaches, you know, um, if they skip one practice and have a service project one time out of the year, they're not putting more on their, we're not adding more to their plate and I'll guarantee you they'll get more out of the service project than they will the practice.
You know, I.
So there's lots of ways we can do it without adding time that they're putting in or putting more on their plate.
I've seen.
Just rearranges their plate a little bit.
I've seen the soccer team do exactly that and I think it's been an amazing thing. It's one day a year, one practice a year. They give up and they do the special needs Olympics and the kids love it. And I know the boys on the team love it. They look forward to it. And it it does. It does good things and it builds unity and it it just develops young men into to more than soccer players. And that's what we're after. We don't do these things just to develop athletic skills. I mean, that's great. I love it. I do the same things with my kids. But I hope, I mean, when every activity I put my kids in, I look at that coach and say, is that someone's going to teach my child values that I want beyond the skills that they're learning on the field? And if they're not, we'll pick something else and it has nothing to do with the activity. It has to do with that person and what they're going to teach my kids. And I love that the idea of making sure that they're learning service while they're involved.
Man, I had something present. So I know I'm not the one who who typically says, here's what the research shows. That's usually Dr. Woodford. He's he's, uh, much, much more well-versed in that than I am. But I can remember attending a, uh, or listening to a lecture while I was an undergrad talking about the social science research that's going into things like donating and service and and doing good. And one of the things he talked about was that, you know, he he kind of titled the the discussion, if you want to make money, give it away. Uh, and he and he talked about how that created a a, uh, there were soft benefits to doing good, whether it was donating blood or serving or sir, you know, providing service projects or 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 even just cash donations. And it it increases levels of happiness. It increases, uh, just just self-esteem and self-worth feelings. And and in doing that, it then leads to improvements in overall achievement and other things. And so and then that led, you know, his his thesis was that that led to things like greater income o- over time. My thinking with it is, you know, we're in the the business of trying to improve students in their their educational endeavors in their minds and sharpen those. And and I just think that the same principles, uh, that he was sharing at that time are most likely applicable. I don't have the hard, fast data to present to you today, but I believe that 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 we could find it for sure.
Thank you, Grant.
President, one other thing.
Yes.
I'm just, so two thousand twenty-three, Governor Cox, did that U-Serve? You guys have heard of that? And, um, they did a pilot program with some high schools. It'd be nice. I know and I think they put three million dollars to it for the, um, administration of, anyway. Be interesting to look at those findings that they've they've done in two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four, just to see what they've found. So they piloted it in in some high schools. It'd be interesting to just to see what they've done and, I mean, maybe, anyway. I and I think Deidre Henderson, Lieutenant Governor, now heads it, but anyway, just a thought. You can look that up on U-Serve. Been in the news a little bit. It's just a thought and it's about, he gave an executive order about service and volunteerism, so. In the fall, anyway, interesting stuff.
So board members, like with anything that's good and sometimes a little bit hard, we're going to get some pushback. There's no question about that, right? If we don't want pushback, then we just go status quo and we don't worry about rocking the boat. Um, but that's, I don't think that's what this board's all about. It's not what I'm all about. There there's no question in my mind that this is, this is good. There's no question in my mind that this is going to cause some work and it's going to create some some pushback. But, you know, with implementation and execution, it's about how we go about it. And I I I have faith in our principals that, you know, that they will take this and make good out of it. And I think they'll bring back some some plans that'll will be reasonable and doable and and benefit kids. And again, I don't think it'll be perfect the first year or two, but I think it's something that we can build on and and get feedback on. The execution will probably change as we learn, right? Uh, we'll adapt. That's what we do in this district. I mean, everything we've done with our instructional framework, you would, you wouldn't imagine imagine how much adaptation we've already done. You know, that we're 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 way better off today than we were two years ago, uh, and 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 a year ago because we we learn from data and we we adjust and change and we'll do the same thing here. We're going to have a starting point, right?
Board members, do any of you have any other comments or you know that you can re- read through it? You can, um, suggest things, ideas, thoughts, send them in?
There's lots of shalls, so and I don't know if that's problematic. I I just really would love the principals' input. You shall do this. You should, it's quite prescriptive, but maybe, like you said, you thought it was going to be more implementation. It's 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 broad enough, but it's, anyway, I don't.
Yeah, the shalls are all relevant to the plan, not to the content necessarily of the plan, right? Or or what we expect them specifically to do. It's it's, the shalls are part of the plan. And and I'll give you my rationale for that. I talked to you about this earlier, um, Robin, but I, you know, I I want to be crystal clear. What's an expectation? What's a suggestion? What's a a optional thing to do? The, you know, when I see the word shall in policy or in procedure, then I know very clearly that's an expectation. You can't miss it. But may or should or will, um, that softens it and and we could do will, right? Instead of shall, uh, that'd be okay. I'd still have to be pretty clear that, no, that's an expectation. But we can change all those shalls to wills.
Maybe just when it's explained, maybe that.
Yeah, yeah.
That's my last thought.
And and, you know, we do have some principals that they 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 get a little, uh, fidgety when you use the word shall. There's no doubt. That's not me, right? I I mean, we're all different, wired differently that way, but, um, but we can certainly change those to will and just be clear that that these are expectations. Would that help, Robin, if we did that?
I I think so, but I maybe I'm just hypersensitive to that, too. I don't know. I think it's your nature when you're a, when you're a leader, when, you know, you like autonomy, self-autonomy.
Yes.
It's just, it's more the, again, the optic, not so much, I mean, I think it's clear that this is an expectation, but it's, I guess it's, the messaging is, would be important, I think. So for me, for me, yes, I don't know, but I'm one of five board members, so they don't feel like that.
Yeah, I'm I I like being very direct, so it's, that's how I would write it, but that's, that's just because clear expectations. If you don't give them, you don't receive.
Will?
I like direct, too, but they, um, but I think it's important that we remember, we're just coming up with the direction that the board would like to see us implement. Then we're going to go ask for their input and then we're going to go clear back through this again, so.
And I'll have one principal that will very quickly say, hey, can we do away with all the shalls? So so, yeah, I know that's coming.
And others, they, um, but they, um, you know, in my line of, in my line of work, two days ago, I said to my employees, we had a meeting. I said, if any, any of you would like to, it's okay if you're setting at your first customer at seven AM. They're complaining about their truck's getting hot. It's hot outside. It's miserable. If you guys have ever thought about it, they move ten feet at a time. And when that truck engine gets two hundred and twenty degrees and it's a hundred degrees outside, it's pretty miserable, even in there with a, the air conditioner blowing on. Not one person showed up the next morning early enough to be at their customer, but they was all complaining. So that day I sent out a note and I said, you will, you shall be at your first stop at seven o'clock in the morning. And every one of them was there this morning. And they all agreed that it was much better tonight.
Yeah.
And so I like the direct thing and.
You know, trying to implement something new, it's it's got to have some correction. That's why I say it's, we've got to be careful as boards, what we shall and what we will in this. That's, I guess that's what Rob's getting at, too.
Yeah.
Is, is there's just that part of it that we want them to use their own.
Own, own board.
Development, uh, their programs, you know, their own insight, but yet there's some shalls in here that we want to see it happen because we think it's going to be a benefit. And I think it's proven. I I'm with Grant. It doesn't matter, but there is not a, I don't know of a professional team that doesn't do this type of, but I but I hate to relate everything to sports because that's where I'm worried about with some of these clubs and stuff that are doing good already. What are we trying to develop there?
And it's all grade levels, it says.
Yeah, and all grade levels, and which is kind of neat.
I like that.
You might kind of get some, you know, young kids are much more adaptable.
Wouldn't it be great if, I mean, they'll brainstorm it, but wouldn't it be great if they had the students come up with the ideas and then see the needs? Students observe what's needed. That'd be really awesome. And then students figure out how to implement. That would be.
I think each teacher and each principal, once they do it, I remember, I've done a lot of service in my life. And when I was in fifth grade in the major school, I was a good reader. That's just something that come good to. English, no. Spelling, no. Arithmetic and reading was my thing. It just come naturally to me. So my teacher came to me and said, we, little so-and-so needs some help with her reading. And so I'm going to assign you to spend so many minutes. To start with, I was mad. I was disgusted. It wasn't my problem. I didn't want to help. That was one of the most rewarding things that I ever done and it taught me about service in my life. And the difference that it made in that little gal's life, she went from being the bottom of the class to in six months, she was helping other people. Just made all the difference in the, in the, but I thought that was way beneath me to have to sit there and point words out to her. Back then, we sounded everything out, but to teach her how, to try to help her, teach her how to read. And I will never forget it. It was one of the greatest things that teacher done for me. So there's a million different things that could happen. Doesn't have to be sports. Doesn't have, it it'll happen in different ways.
So, President, if if you're okay, what I'd like to do is is get whatever input, feedback the board has, take a stab at making a few changes to this based on that feedback and I'd like to get it right out to our principals. And I know I know it's summertime. It's it's, I may not get all of them, but get it out there and get some feedback from them. We we can bring this back in August. Uh, if if we get feedback from the principals, uh, the board's happy with what with what I bring in August. We we could adopt this and and get those plans in place for this coming school year.
Board members, from what I'm hearing, that's what you're asking for, right?
Yep.
Just input back from the principals. And you all know that you have the opportunity to send ideas in, so that sounds great, Superintendent.
Okay, that'll be good. So all I would ask board members is the the sooner you can give me, uh, the input, the better. Okay? And you can just put it right in the comments here right now if you want, uh, tonight, or you can get back on board docs and do it, uh, in the in the coming days. I'd I'd like within maybe ten days to be able to get it out to the principals, so. Is that enough time?
Given my feedback here.
I I would just note, look at the comments I've already made because I tried to just take note of things that you had, uh, you had requested, so.
Thanks, Grant. Appreciate that. Yeah, Grant kind of filled it out as we were.
Yeah, I don't think we need to wait myself.
Yeah. Unless somebody really wants to write something, I'm good with going as soon as you can.
Yeah, me, too.
Okay, so I'll I'll make some adjustments and get that out to principals. Yeah, thank you.
Good. Um, Utah fits all scholar.
First, um, President, I I just want to, I want to thank the board. I I know that this seems like, man, that retreat was forever ago, you know, it was last November. Uh, it it did, again, we we've had a lot go on this year since then, right? We we had a major curveball thrown at us, uh, with within a month or two after that retreat and and I, we, uh, but but here we are and I I think we're we're putting that, we're honoring the time we spent together in November. It's a little bit delayed, but I think that it's it's going to really be great. Tanya, thank you. I know you had, uh, a lot of skin in the game here. You know, Tanya made some suggestions back in November and and felt really passionate and strong about, uh, implementing this into our strategic plan. So thank you and I do, I believe this is going to make us better. So with that, President.
Okay, can I make a con? I wonder if it's legal for me to make a comment on something. If it, if I start and you don't like it, tap me and I'll quit. Board members, we ask you for two questions from each of you. I haven't checked with Dr. Lees. If you haven't picked your two questions by the first of the month, then we will pick other questions and move forward. Me and Dr. Lees would like to do this this, this summer. Okay, so if you want.
I haven't.
If you want to pick your questions and you have questions that you want to ask, get them done and get them turned in so that we can do it over the summer months. That's why it wasn't on the agenda. I just wanted, we don't.
It's a work session. I think you're okay.
Okay.
Just informational.
Um, Utah fits all scholarships? Dr. Woodford?
Okay, President, thank you. Um, this this one's kind of interesting. Uh, it's been on my radar, uh, but I didn't really receive good training on this until a couple of weeks ago, uh, when I was with my colleagues at a, uh, a training for, you know, for superintendents on on this. So we're we're still getting guidance and information from the state on this. But I think we have enough. We can, we can at least move forward on this. Let me, let me just try to, I I know you've you've got the information I sent you. We're we're at the point now where we have, we have families in the community that have applied and received notice that they are, that they've been awarded the Utah Fitzall Scholarship. So that's the scholarship that the legislature with House Bill two fifteen, uh, over a year ago, right in the, in in the twenty twenty-three legislative session, authorize where families could apply and get, uh, get scholarships. and get, uh, get scholarships that they could use for, whether it's private education, homeschooling expenses, uh, a number of other things, right? And it's a significant amount of money, I don't have the exact figure, but I know it's around $8,000, give or take, that, that these families would be awarded. So, the issue is, is, well, what if the families want their kids to participate in a public school part of the day, right? And then in a private school or a home school the other part of the day? How is that gonna work? And we've recently received some guidance on that, and it's actually written in code where what would happen is the school district can apply with the state to be a provider for the Utah Fitzall Scholarship, okay? And it's automatic, if we apply, they're gonna, they're not gonna say no, they're gonna accept us, and we would become a provider. But part of what we have to do in our application is we have to establish the rate, the fee of what we would charge those families per unit of time or credit, okay? So, the, the two questions really, we have to resolve soon, and I say soon because these parents have already been awarded, and now they're trying to make plans for the 24, 25 school year. So I don't think this is something that can wait. In fact, in talking with a parent, she's, she just said, if there's any way, you know, we have another board meeting next, next week, she said, if there's any way the board could authorize this, or at least make a decision so you can start the application process, it would be greatly appreciated. Worried that if we wait until August, we're really cutting it close for them to make those kinda decisions and to get their kid registered, which makes sense, right? So, um, so the, the thing the board needs to do, number one, the board needs to decide, are we going to apply to be a, a service provider for the Utah Fitzall Scholarship? And if we are, we have to establish those rates, okay? So, um, with that, what I wanna share with you is that, as far as I know, based on, on a, a hand raise with my colleagues, less than half of the school districts have either already applied or intend to apply. Now, that could change, because two weeks ago, I wasn't sure where we were at, so I didn't raise my hand because I wasn't sure. So, I would imagine that, that that number will inflate, it'll, it'll get bigger, and in fact, I'm pretty sure it will. Now, there are a few districts in the state that have deliberately already said, no, we're not gonna do it, based on their disagreement with the law and the fact that the legislature has allocated money that could flow to public ed for private education. So, so there's a few districts that have already said, no, we're not doing this. So, Washington County, they're the only district I know of that have already established a rate, and the rate they chose was $1,000 per credit. Now, keep in mind, at the, at the secondary level, uh, a credit would be, so a trimester class would be half a credit, so two trimesters would be one credit. So one class, which, which, you know, takes, what, a fifth of a student's day, right? If you think of it that way, over two, that gives you an idea of time, over two trimesters, that would be the equivalent of one credit, and they're charging $1,000. Now, that's probably about right, if you think of a family getting 8,000 and, and a fifth of a kid's education for two trimesters, it, it's about right. And, and Washington County did, they did a, an analysis to figure that out, so they didn't just draw it out of a hat, they, they crunched numbers and said, this is what it means in Washington County. I have, I take issue with the fact that Washington County and Cache County and, and Uentah and Daggett and, you know, that, that Duchesne, that we can all have a different rate. I, I just don't think that's, I think that's silly, I think the legislator should've said, if you're gonna be a provider, this is the rate, just so we wouldn't have to make this, this call and then, then have the scrutiny and criticism that comes along with it. So, if you ask me right now, well, Superintendent, what should the rate be? I, I think we gotta, I think we gotta go back and do a similar analysis as what Washington County did, and bring back something that, that, you know, we feel is, um, we can back with numbers.
So do you, you feel we're going to, is this gonna be a competitive environment of any sort? Do you think our, some of our private schools, charter schools will, will try and enroll in this and?
Oh, yeah, yeah, all, all of them will, yeah.
So in some way, we've gotta do a competitive comparison as well, you know, I look at it as what a, the cost would be, you know, to have a pupil in school for that $1,000 is reasonable, you know, and they can renew this credit, from what I see, they can renew this annually, so.
Yeah, we, we can change the rate anytime, um, but I, you know, I, yeah, I.
A thousand's great, but it may not be competitive.
And remember, this isn't coming out of the parent's pocket, this is coming from the legislature, so we have to keep that in mind.
And it may not be competitive.
So, was this question for dual immersion at the high school, or did it also include elementary?
We'd have to establish a, a similar rate at the elementary, but we don't have credits, so we'd have to do it based on hours, like hours per week that the parent would, would want the child enrolled. And I know, like, the parent that I spoke to recently, the, the big issue is DLI, they love our DLI program, they want their kids to continue to be involved in that, uh, particularly like at the middle school level, and I think the elementary's gonna hold true to some extent, but, but they don't want their kids necessarily in school all day, um, they want that flexibility.
So here's my question, if we take up 10 seats for kids who only wanna be there for part of the day, and we turn away students that wanna be there all day, that doesn't seem like an intelligent, any business person would say, well, we can receive funds from the state for 10 students, and we're, I, I don't, I guess they go to another school, it's not like we totally lose those students, but I, but, but it seems wrong.
Well, it's a great observation, and someday we might have to plan for that, depending on how this grows in Uentah County, right? Uh, we may have to plan for that. I, I think now, we could simply have a, a policy or procedure that just says, we, we won't turn, turn away a full-time student in a class, like, like they, they can enroll, but, but they don't get first dibs, they have to, they have to wait till the enrollment settles.
Based on.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Based on student count.
Yeah.
Part of the, uh, I read, thank you for sending all the information, Superintendent, I did read, so to apply for that Utah Fitzall, they cannot be a full-time student in the LEA.
That's, that's correct, yeah.
Okay, other question, real quick, so it goes with Tanya's question, what, what is Washington School District doing for elementary? What, what's their rate?
They, they've established a rate there based on hours, so.
Oh, hours, they didn't find out really.
Yeah, yeah, 'cause they don't have credits, but that's, they gave us the example of secondary.
Okay.
And I think secondary is where we're gonna see more of that. We're gonna see more kids wanting to come for certain things. Now, I wanna talk about activities, because my understanding is, is if we, if we don't become a provider, students will not be able to participate in extracurricular activities.
That's what I understand.
They have, we have to become a provider.
Well, and I will add, so interestingly, the feedback I've gotten from Washington County is that they'll do the providing for academic things, but they're not being providers when it comes to athletics.
That's correct, they chose, they chose to exclude those kids altogether from their, from their extracurricular activities. I'm not sure I think that's necessarily the right thing, but it's, it's a consideration.
Yeah, we want them to be engaged and, and wanna come the next year.
So say you don't have a Utah Fitzall Scholarship and you want to come to a, in a school district to take a class at the high school, do you have to pay?
So, Grant, do you wanna answer that? I, you, I don't think so.
I just wanna clarify, so you're saying a student, they, they have not received.
They're a homeschool kid.
Okay, they, they, they've not applied, or maybe they've got, not gotten it, then would they have to apply and pay tuition prices? I don't know that off the top of my head and would need to look into that.
I think that would be really important to know, because I think our high school has a lot of homeschooled students that are coming and taking a couple of classes a day at the high school, and then all of a sudden, they would all be.
I assume.
Can't we partially enroll those kids, though? I think we, I think we get funding for those kids.
Yeah.
That's probably the case.
Yeah, we get state funding, so I, that wouldn't change, that, that would not change.
I just, yeah, just wanna make sure.
This would only apply to scholarship recipients.
Okay.
It's a great question.
Yeah, I think that counts as a seat full, right? Whenever they come?
Yeah, see, the scholarship kids, we can't get WPU funding for them, that's why we have to charge them.
Like double dipping.
Double dipping, yep, so that makes sense to me. Yeah, it's automatic, but one, one could work, but the other one wouldn't.
Right.
So, yeah, so no, I, after going through it in our conversation today, I don't, I don't see an issue, I, I don't see how we can't do it, we just gotta come up with the details, in my opinion, so. Especially if we want kids to participate, now, does that eliminate now a terrorist student from participating in soccer?
No.
It would have no bearing on a, we would handle those kids exactly how we always have, 'cause they, unless they're a scholarship recipient, then.
Yeah, then it eliminates them, so that's what I'm wondering.
And we would have the choice whether we would allow those kids to participate or not, but we have to treat them all the same, so from a policy standpoint, we either let them all participate, or we don't let any of them participate. And, you know, for me, I, you read in bold what I put, right? I mean, I just think that we're a public school district, we do what's right and best for kids, regardless of the politics and regardless of the decisions even their own parents might make, we have an opportunity to do what's right and best for the kids. And you know what? Some of those kids are gonna end up being teachers in our school district, some of them are gonna be key community members moving forward. So, do we let them participate in extracurriculars? I think we do, because they're kids.
Let's track.
They're part of our community.
Let's track that. There's, it's not gonna be that big a percentage, honestly, I, I mean, maybe it will, but like, the news articles, 97% of Utah's students are still going to public schools. It's that 3%, but it's, man, they've put a lot of money.
A lot of money into, a lot of money.
To the 3%.
Well, because that 3% is gonna get bigger.
It is, and, 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 you know, I know the, the buzzword is parent choice, and, and I believe in that, and I, I just feel like, I mean, I advocate for public education, I feel like we give them so many choices and so many opportunities, and, and it's great, and I feel the same way, we gotta do what's best for kids, but, but the implementation is a little hinky, I don't know, I'm just not.
Yeah, but we can work with the legislature on that, I really think there's some things we, some feedback we can give them. Uh, again, should an accredited public school have to apply to be a provider? No, heavens no, that shouldn't be required, right? And, and should we have to set a rate that's different than other school districts in the state? Well, we get the same WPU. I mean, it's, it's silly that there just isn't a formula established by the legislature, by the, by the State Board of Education, and this should be an easy thing that we don't even have to really think much about, but, uh, we'll, we'll give feedback and, and see if we can inform that.
And can we find out, like, maybe at your next superintendent, I mean, I'd love to know, I'd like to kinda see how, I mean, I know you have Washington District, but I'd like to kinda see.
Some others that are doing.
Yeah, just some, just a little more.
Yeah, so later this month, I'll go to Cedar City for, uh, for a, a training and a meeting, and I think this'll, I know this will come up again, and then we'll, we'll stropol again and see where people are, it'll be interesting, and I can, I can reach out and, and try to get some information about what they're charging. We don't have to make that decision, obviously, right away, but, um, I, I think if the board can at least settle by next week on whether or not we should apply, at least, at least we can move forward with gathering data and, and try to get this wrapped up fast enough so that these, these parents can plan.
My only thought is, on, on, I think that we need to apply for it, in my personal opinion, and I think they need to have, um, be able to play sports, but I also think it's important that, it's gonna be a tough target to hit this, um, what do we charge? But they need to pay as much as the other taxpayers are paying to get their, it needs to be as close as we can possibly, they can't have a cut rate deal because, because of this, in my opinion.
So, Grant, you got a assignment there, uh, to start working on figuring that piece out, I think, I think we got people in the business department that can pin that down pretty quick for us.
So, board members, are, are you okay if we put this on the business meeting for next week to vote on it?
Yes.
So that the superintendent knows that we are gonna apply or we're not, depending on your vote, and then we'll work on the pricing down the road, is that correct?
Yeah, I, I think the pricing can probably come in August, however, in our application, we're gonna have to put the pricing in there. So, we might be better off to try to pin that down by next week, and there isn't a great science here, because again, uh.
Is that, is that possible, Grant?
So, so if we put it at that same as the other, Washington County?
Washington County.
It's only gonna affect, be affected by a few students, which may grow next year, we can always change it next year, right?
We, we can, we, and, you know, again, we have to start somewhere, but I, I think we can actually figure out, uh, we can figure out a really close ratio based on, like, solid information, I don't think it'll be hard to do, it's just math. So, let, let us come next week with a, a recommendation, and then if the board feels good about that, we'll run with it.
That would mean all the eligibility, but still, we have to be under Utah High School Association as well, I can't, yeah, I think you gotta be treated, I mean.
Yep, and these kids, to participate, they would have to pay the same fees that our other kids do, obviously, right? So I don't think we'd have to charge them anything extra or additional to participate.
So, you know, we do have that.
Your mic's not on.
Under our fee schedule, I knew I was looking for this. We do have non-resident student tuition, we have that, and we have the non-student, but that's for a full-time, non-student, non-resident student tuition, K through eight, and non-resident student tuition, nine through 12, and I'm just looking at our school fee, uh, no, I'm looking at our, um, extracurricular, I'm looking at school fee policy, and then we have the fee schedule, I don't know.
Is that for extracurricular participation, Robin?
That is extracurricular.
Yeah, so we, we could just apply that.
Anyway, I'm just saying, we do have some of that information. This, you know, we had to, anyway, that's at the very top, under 4.0 on the fee schedule of, yeah, that policy, 007.0505, just FYI.
All right, so, President, we'll come back with a recommendation, uh, next week.
Okay. Shawna, you'll add that to our agenda for?
Now, the parent I, I visited with on the phone, I, I let her know, I said, well, would it be better to wait till August so we can get public input? And, uh, she said, well, if you'll, if you'll let me know if it's gonna be on the agenda, she said, I'll, I'll get some other people together and we'll come down and visit with the board, so we'll probably have some people that will, will wanna comment on this next.
That's not extracurricular.
Okay.
Todd, do you have anything else for this meeting?
No, I'm good.
Denise?
No.
Robin? Tanya? Grant? Superintendent?
No, but thank you, board members, I, I think for the time we spent tonight, it's been productive, and, and, uh, uh, again, I apologize about the meetings in July, we'll, we'll have one more, uh, next week, and, uh, but it, you know, uh, just appreciate the impact you have on our, our students and, and staff, uh, it's, it's always good when you feel like you're winning, and right now, you know, I will tell you, our team, we feel like we're, we're winning, we're, we're doing some great things, and the data's looking good, it's, it's, uh, it's, it's a fun thing to be a part of, uh, very rewarding, and our principals are feeling that way, too. If you talk to our principals, they, uh, there's a lot of efficacy right now in what they're doing, we wanna, we wanna keep that moving in a positive direction, but all starts right here with, with you, um, so thank you for your, your, your vision, your, your direction, your support, uh, it's just, uh, UNA School District is going in a great direction, so thank you.
Superintendent might kill me, I didn't intend on mentioning this, board members, but I think it, the people at the state level are starting to notice, they're wondering what's go, they're wondering what's going on, they have, did that get finalized, the superintendent was asked to present?
So, we did fill out an application, and we haven't heard back from them yet, but we'll likely be presenting at the, at the conference next January.
To teach what we're doing, so, pretty cool stuff. I'd entertain a motion to close.
I would make a motion that we close our work session.
All second.
Denise Maynard, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Passes unanimously.
The time is 5:45 PM.
All right, we have dinner, right? Shawna, where's the dinner at?